The clinic also provides classes and workshops on different health topics. A new stadium means new jobs for Angelenos. Hundreds of folks came out to apply for current openings at the Los Angeles Football Club Stadium. Rasha Goel was at the job fair where some applicants scored big.
I'm overwhelmed with gratitude, that's how I'm feeling. I'm very excited because now I can just broaden my perspective with this and further my career and just take it home with my family, share it with them.
Ariana Chanel applied for a position in guest relations, and little did she know she'd be going home with the job in hand. She was among the hundreds of LA residents who attended a job fair hosted by Councilman Kern Price at the Bank of California Stadium, which is gearing up to host its first Major League Soccer game in April.
We're excited about this investment, the $350 million investment the LA Football Club is making in this new stadium. And we want to make sure that our residents are able to take advantage of the employment opportunities that exist. They're committed to hiring locally and we want to make sure that our residents show up for hundreds of full-time and part-time jobs in a variety of areas.
We are hiring for all of our frontline positions: security, guest services, food services, hospitality positions, as well as operations. So those are all the folks that will help us on game day and event day execute all of our events.
Interviews and drug testing were also done on the spot, and for those without experience, no problem, job training will be provided.
It was fast, easy, and chill.
This is really nice, and this is a nice turnout. So many people are down here interested in working for the neighborhood, and that's good.
The stadium is a state-of-the-art soccer stadium seating 22,000 and is part of the revitalization in Expo Park.
We're excited about not only the soccer field, but the restaurants, the shops, the stores are going to be a part of this complex, and the opportunity to hire locally so that local folks are getting these jobs.
I'm going to root for my team, my city, and I'm going to do the best that I can to make people welcome to here.
Again, there are approximately 1,200 positions that need to be filled. Now if you were unable to make the three-day career fair, well, you can log on to lafc.com/careers to find out more information and to apply. In South Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Again, that website to search for job openings is lafc.com. Well, back at City Hall, Lunar New Year celebrations got underway with plenty of music, dance, and tradition. This year was dedicated to man's best friend. Gil Reyes reports on how city leaders are using the occasion to promote pet adoptions.
Festive lion dancers prowl the aisles of Los Angeles City Hall to launch Lunar New Year 2018. And hot diggity, it also happens to be the Year of the Dog.
The Lunar New Year is celebrated by many Asian cultures in China, Korea, Vietnam, Thailand, Indonesia, Malaysia, the Philippines, Taiwan, Singapore, and right here in Los Angeles.
LA's first Korean-American council member, David Rue, mentions the best assets of the astrological canine and supposedly anyone born in the Year of the Dog. Characteristics include loyalty, hard work, and fairness. In LA's Chinatown, doggy images fly on flags. Councilman Gilbert Sadio represents the community. He helped welcome the beautiful Miss LA Chinatown Queen, her lovely court, and some new furry friends.
This is the first time we've ever adopted five dogs in one day. Where are the owners?
And a treat from Council President Herb Wesson and colleagues, during that weekend only, all dog and cat adoptions at city shelters were free. The city's six shelters have recently achieved its no-kill goal. That means no healthy shelter animals had to be euthanized last year. Pet adoptions helped, another reason to celebrate with dogs, cats, and yes, lion dancers too. Now, if you were born during the years 1946, 1958, 1970, 1982, 1994, and 2006, then you were in fact born in the Year of the Dog. Lucky colors this year: green, red, and purple. Reporting from Chinatown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Get even luckier by adopting a new friend this year. Dogs, cats, and even rabbits need loving homes. Search for one at laanimalservices.com. A new partnership between the city and Loyola Law School helps get former prisoners back on their feet. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell brings City Hall to his constituents, and a family turns their tragic loss into something positive for their community. All of these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti partnered with Loyola Law School to offer free legal services for formerly incarcerated individuals. The new clinic helps clients move on with their lives after incarceration. Garcetti said that people should be met with forgiving hearts, open doors, and real opportunities when trying to rebuild their lives, adding that it's not only the right thing to do, but it's critical to helping keep our communities safe. First launched last year, the clinic is a partnership between the mayor's office of reentry and Loyola Law School. It's staffed by student advocates who represent clients needing legal assistance in such areas as employment, immigration, child support, and professional licensing. The clinic has already handled more than 220 matters and is supported by the Mayor's Fund for Los Angeles and the California Community Foundation. For more information, visit lls.edu. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell recently held a community walk and neighborhood cleanup in Atwater Village. O'Farrell and his staff went door-to-door to distribute important contact information for free city services. Volunteers from the community and the Los Angeles Conservation Corps were also on hand in a neighborhood beautification project. O'Farrell said the goal is to bring City Hall to the people instead of the people having to come to City Hall.
I'm a big believer in bringing government to someone's doorstep. It's really important, especially in this day and age, when through social media and everything else, we're actually losing connectivity with one another at a very basic human level. And so it's important to me to make, take that message to everyone's door and to the constituents that I serve.
The Department of Rec and Parks, along with Council President Herb Wesson Jr. and the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, gathered to celebrate Lafayette Park's new playground in honor of Lionel Murray, a two-year-old boy who died last March. In honor of their son, his parents decided to give back to the community by building a playground for kids ages two to five. With the help of friends and other groups, the Murray family was able to raise enough funds to build a playground which includes an ADA-accessible swing, shade structure, and resilient surfacing. The park is located in the Westlake District of Los Angeles and serves approximately 32,000 residents.
It's amazing that a young kid that lived only 24 months will have an impact on this city and in this area for years to come, as thousands and thousands of two-, three-, and four-year-olds play on a park dedicated for him.
A new walking path across the south dam of the Silver Lake Reservoir attracted big crowds on opening day. Gil Reyes reports on this change of pace for regulars at the reservoir.
A new walking path opens on the south end of the Silver Lake Reservoir, and for today only, people were allowed to go beyond the fence and get really close to the water. Reservoir regular Ruth Siegel wants that every day.
It's amazing, it's fantastic. I mean, on the outside, you just feel like you're on the outside, and it's just a totally different perspective to be up close to the reservoir.
Today, we're celebrating the opening of the path across the dam. So no longer will people have to go along the bottom of the reservoir and along the narrow streets of the bottom. They can stay around the reservoir perimeter, go across the dams to the beautiful views that have always been locked away inside the gate.
The South Dam pathway is the latest improvement to the lake. It was drained a few years back after the government banned open water sources like reservoirs for drinking water. Residents wanted the HTO back, even if it's just for aesthetics, so it has returned. Crews also added a flowing underground pipeline.
So that even in the drought years, the reservoir will always have water in it.
Silver Lake Councilman Mitch O'Farrell mentions the addition of some 30 new trees. The city is considering even more improvements and wants to know what people want.
Really hoping to, that the city will one day take down the fence or push it in more so we can get closer to the water.
Or just keep it open.
Or keep it open, that would be fantastic. Yeah, and then make some improvements to the landscape.
Listening carefully to the concerns of folks that are here, we figured out a way to get it done. I think it's a good lesson for politics today, where we see so much division and so much no. This is a community and a city of yes.
A city of joggers, strollers, and nature lovers. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The South Dam pathway is open every day from dawn to dusk. Dogs are allowed on leash, but bikes are prohibited. While go biking in the valley, enjoy free screening of Disney's Coco, and the realities of Cuban life come to life in a revealing exhibit. All this and this week's things to do. Enjoy the West Valley on two wheels. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a 10-mile community bike ride at a family-friendly pace. Riders will be escorted by LAPD officers, and here's your chance to see the valley like you've never seen it before and get some exercise in too. The ride begins on Saturday, March 3 at Warner Ranch Park, and will highlight the Warner Center and Woodland Hills. For more, visit blumenfield.lacity.org. Bring the whole family for a free screening of Disney's Coco and enjoy a carnival fiesta. Hosted by the LA Red Shield Community Center and Councilmember Gilbert Sadio, there'll be plenty of free food, free carnival games, and free raffles and free toys for children in attendance. It all takes place on Saturday, March 3 at 2:00 p.m. at the LA Red Shield Community Center located at 1532 West 11th Street. Revealing complexities both on and off the island, Cuba Is explores aspects of Cuba not easily accessed by foreigners and sometimes not even by Cubans themselves. Born from indigenous African and European roots, divergent politics and limitations in communication and commerce, the Cuba scene in this exhibition goes beyond the folklore and offers new insight into its current reality. The exhibit features more than 120 photos featuring subjects ranging from defiant youth to the hard-partying children of the 1%. The exhibit is on display until March 4 at the Annenberg Space for Photography located at 2000 Avenue of the Stars. For more, visit annbergphotospace.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take a seat. Today is Wednesday, February 28. I want to welcome you to City Hall, your city council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum, would you call a roll?
Blumenfield, Bonn, Buscain, O'Sadio, Englander, Harris, Thompson, Wieser, Carrasco, Correia, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves, and O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonn and moves, and Buscain O seconds.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1E, 1H, and 1N be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, that the lien amount for item 1C be reduced to $1,577.65 to reflect partial payment, and then subsequently continued to April 10.
Hold on a second, Mr. Clerk. Shhh. Now, continue.
That the lien amount for item 1D be reduced to $398.16 in as much as the lien has been rebuilt, that the lien amount for item 1R be reduced to $814.79 to reflect partial payment, and that the item be continued until April 10, that item 1Q be continued until April 10, and that item 1O be received and filed in as much as the lien has been rescinded by the department. Lastly, there's a request from member to continue item 12 to March 7.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Please continue, Mr. Clerk.
Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 1 through 5.
Okay, then let's take up item 6. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, a card has just come in for 6 as well.
Okay, then continue.
Very good, sir. That takes us to items 7 through 25, they're items for which public hearings have been held.
Mr. Bonn.
Item 21 for a question.
21, Mr. Englander.
Item 14 special.
14. Let's prepare then to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Buscain O.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 16, fourth with, please.
Item 16. Item 16, fourth with.
And, Mr. President, there's also been a request to send item 20 fourth with.
Okay, without objection, so ordered, the next section of items.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 26 through 29. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, let's move on to item 30. Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. President, I believe that has come from the Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and River Committee. Perhaps Mr. O'Farrell would like to speak to the matter.
Mr. O'Farrell, item 30.
Hold, please. Hold on the desk.
So we will hold that item. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to make a comment on it? Okay. Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez for presentation. Ms. Rodriguez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I am really delighted today. Today's a very, very special day for me because today I get to celebrate and recognize the students from Pacoima Middle School and the team that participates out of Pacoima Middle School in a fabulous program that has been in operation in our city for decades, Students Run Los Angeles.
Let's give them a round of applause. Welcome to City Hall.
SRLA is a nonprofit that provides free school-based mentoring physical fitness program for at-risk and middle and high school students in Los Angeles, which began in 1989. And SRLA has served more than 63,000 students. There are more than 500 teacher leaders and 3,200 students from 175 schools and community programs throughout Los Angeles who participate in SRLA. SRLA is really unique in that it brings together these teacher trainers and the students to train every year to participate in the Los Angeles Marathon, which is coming up on March 18th. So the students that are behind me are students that have been in training since the culmination of the, since the start of the school year. And what's particularly special when I think about SRLA is the dedication of the team of teachers that come together, that take of their free time, to make a commitment to serving our youth and teaching them about goal-setting, teaching them about how to strive and train every single day to help meet that larger goal. And this group behind me is going to be doing just that, and I'm very, very excited. SRLA has been a very important part of my initial tenure on the Los Angeles City Council because while so many people get to enjoy running the streets of Los Angeles in participation of the Los Angeles Marathon, I created a program to create an environment where our students could actually run the streets of their neighborhoods, which was called Sundays on the Boulevard. And if not for the participation and partnership and support with both the Los Angeles Police Department and SRLA, that wouldn't have been possible. We also, in my district, have been host to the SRLA 18-mile Friendship Run, which we just had at Hanson Dam just a few weeks ago. The success of SRLA is really a testament to the volunteers, the nonprofit organization, and its phenomenal work, but again, it comes to the students and the teachers making this incredible commitment each and every year. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Christine Pajak, the Executive Director of Students Run Los Angeles.
We want to thank Councilwoman Rodriguez and City Council for hosting us today. It is a privilege to honor Ms. Rodriguez and her students for their commitment to Students Run LA. Ms. Rodriguez, along with 500 other teachers in 175 schools that are located in each of your council districts, spent countless hours running with the students to train them for the Los Angeles Marathon. Through their shared blood, sweat, and tears, they organically grow a community of support at their schools. This community then grows even bigger as they join their 3,500 SRLA teammates at six monthly runs leading up to the marathon. They don't come to these runs as students from Pacoima or students from South LA. They come to run as one, as Students Run Los Angeles. This program truly unites the city of Los Angeles, and we thank the City Council for all of your support, and we hope we can keep SRLA running for generations to come. Thank you.
So as Christine mentioned, you know, it's, it might be a coincidence that when she mentioned Ms. Rodriguez, we're talking about my sister, Rachel Rodriguez, who has been a teacher at Pacoima Middle School since her graduation from Occidental College. But what's special about this particular presentation, and we're going to cue a video in a minute, you know, my sister actually started running SRLA as a student at LA Unified when she was attending Mr. Rue's Alma Mater, which is located in Mr. Weezer's district, Francisco Bravo Medical Magnet. And it was, she discovered her love and passion for running there as a student. Clearly, that's something that she does. I, you know, I do a different kind of running. But she has really dedicated herself to this training and this program, not just through her work, not just when she was a student, but she continued it through her years as a teacher at our Alma Mater, Pacoima Middle School. And so I'd like to have you all see a special video, which is going to introduce the next part of this presentation.
My name is Rachel. I am a teacher and I run. I've been a coach with SRLA for the past 11 years. SRLA stands for Students Run Los Angeles, which is a program where students have the opportunity to train and complete the Los Angeles Marathon. This program was built for students like mine, who are the C student or lower, those students who tend to get in trouble, who need that goal-setting, that mentorship. One of my students paralleled me to a jail warden. Like, "Ms. Rodriguez, you're like a jail warden. You're keeping us all in line, and you keep yelling at us to do the right thing and, you know, keep going." I used to run with a bullhorn, and I would run behind them, like, "Come on, why are you walking?" Or I'd have my whistle, and I'll run behind them and start blowing the whistle. "I want to be that person in your head. I want you to hear my voice when you're struggling and it's hard. I want to be that person, oh yeah, let's pretend Ms. Rodriguez is right behind me, and she's going to want me to keep going. That's the person I want to be." Yeah, aha, you better run faster. I attended Pacoima Junior High in 7th, 8th, and 9th grade. So this is where I get off the off-ramp to go to my school. And this is where I grew up running, basically, with my dad. Pacoima is a small community, mostly migrants with low-income families. A lot of times, people see or hear the word Pacoima, and it has a negative connotation. There's also a lot of hard-working families and a lot of wonderful students. After college, I wanted to stay in the Valley. My goal is to give back to my community. I found out that Pacoima had an open spot, so I went and interviewed there, and I've been there ever since. My students definitely have challenges that they feel are insurmountable. What SRLA does and what I do is, we show them a path of taking something that's so impossible and making it possible. My philosophy for SRLA is to be the biggest cheerleader for these kids because some of them don't have that. I will always be their biggest cheerleader. I will always be their biggest fan. I'll do whatever it takes to get them through. What I want to do in Boston is I want to show my students that anything is possible, and that you can start off in a small city called Pacoima and accomplish amazing things with your own. I'm a crazy teacher.
Ms. Rodriguez, I hope your sister didn't bring her whistle or bullhorn.
Colleagues, you know, that video chokes me up because we do call, we do come from a small place called Pacoima. And when I think about what is possible for those of us to achieve, for those of us that sit around this horseshoe, it's very special that we demonstrate each and every day the possibilities for our youth. And I'm so proud because my sister does that every day in the classroom, but she doesn't do it alone. There are, the partners that she has at Pacoima Middle School include Charlie Koski, who is here with us, Elizabeth Marachanian, Jacqueline Hart, and April Donath. And together, this team of teachers trains these students after school, literally going the extra mile to help teach them and give them the tools and the tenacity to continue to pursue their, sometimes what seems the most insurmountable, dreams. But what I'm most proud of is that there was a competition that was initiated by Highlands Company, which is what, why you saw this video. And my sister participated in a competition that was asking for teachers that run to tell their story. And as a result of 1,600, 1,600 people that participated and applied for opportunities to run in the Boston Marathon, my sister is going to be representing Los Angeles in the Boston Marathon as selected by Highlands Company. She is one of 15 that competed among 1,600 in a nationwide search. You know, Mr. Harris Dawson has also Brian Pfeffer, who is also an SRLA teacher from Animo School. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to join us today, but he was also selected. So Los Angeles is going to have two outstanding teachers participating and representing us in the Boston Marathon this year, and I am incredibly proud to be on this council and to honor today the work of my sister, Rachel Rodriguez.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Monica, for recognizing not only myself, but SRLA and Pacoima Middle School. To be selected as one of the teachers to represent Highlands is truly an honor, but I couldn't do it alone. The man that you see behind me, Charlie Koski, he ran the SRLA program by himself for several years before I came along. And once we joined forces, we became a heck of a team because he's the brains and I'm the brawn, is the way we work, and it works.
Let's give Charlie a shout-out.
You know, the SRLA program, as my sister said, I ran my first marathon in high school at Bravo Medical Magnet. My son ran his first marathon last year at Nobel Middle School, and I also run with Nobel, with SRLA, with Nobel. And it's definitely a family affair. We become a family. Speaking of my family, my sister, my parents, my husband, my children, they support me because you can't do this alone. The most important is the students. These kids that you see behind me, their dedication and commitment to the program is unbelievable. SRLA teachers, thank you, SRLA teachers, we don't get compensated, but we do get paid every March when we see that medal around their neck, when we see that, you know what, we had a hand in helping them get there. So I'm always so proud of my runners. So my goal for running Boston this year as a member of the Highlands All Teacher Team is to really show the world not only how teachers, but how students run LA. So thank you for your time, and thank you.
And so with that, colleagues, I'd like to also recognize the students that are here representing the Pacoima Students Run Los Angeles program. Jessica Antonio, Luis Gonzalez, Juan Hernandez, Emma Jimenez, David Montes, Sergio Palacio, Yuli Romero, and Araceli Soto. Thank you all so much. You're all champions.
And Ms. Rodriguez, don't we have a couple of other folk that you might want to recognize?
Yes, I'd also like to acknowledge my folks, my mom and dad, Ralph and Alejandro Rodriguez, that are here today.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Okay, I would like to recognize Mr. Rue, who went to that great football power. No, anyway, Mr. Rue for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor today to introduce a delegation from the Kyunggi Provincial Government from South Korea. That we could have them stand? It's exciting that they're here because just a couple of weeks ago, I was in South Korea for the Winter Olympics, but they are here today, invited by our Chief Administrative Office, to learn about City Hall, learn about our government, in particular, the budget process, as well as how our government functions. So we really want to welcome the employees and the delegation from the Kyunggi Provincial Government, and we hope you learn a lot, and thank you so very much.
Welcome. I'd like to recognize Mr. Sadio at this point for our next presentation. Could you just take a moment so we can get things quieted down?
Mr. President, we have people in the audience that have trouble controlling themselves. Can we get them to stop heckling?
Okay, Mr. Herman, it's your last warning for today.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're disrupting. One more disruption, you'll be asked to leave.
Yes. Mr. President, it's bittersweet and a little ironic that we're here this morning, but we're here to acknowledge Veronica Olmos McDonald, who is the Executive Director of the Central City Neighborhood Partners. You've been there visiting with me in the past. They are our premier family source center, working to help low-income families in the Westlake District. Veronica is very passionate. She's an extraordinary leader. She leads by example. She is just one of those persons that just inspires you to do more for her and her organization. Her efforts have earned CCMP a Family Star, Four-Star Award for their performance in the city of Los Angeles, and a whole range of other awards by their colleagues and contemporaries, including being acknowledged at the national level. This is the 20th year that my office, whether it be the Assembly, the Senate, the Assembly, or the City Council, has partnered with CCMP for what we call a winter wonderland. And you came there once, and we give away literally 5,000 to 10,000 toys away in a very organized, systematic manner. Just recently, working with CCMP and a local developer, we brought a grocery store right down the street, one block away from CCMP, and that store has hired 90% of the people it's hired from the local area, working with CCMP as its conduit. This is the type of leadership that we expect from Veronica. This is the type of leadership that she provides. After being at the helm for 17 years, she After being at the helm for 17 years, she is leaving CCMP. And I was immediately saddened and outraged at this thought, until I learned that she was going to be hired by the city. In fact, by HCID, she'll be running the Family Source Centers for the city. Then I learned that I'd be able to work with her on a much more frequent manner, and my outrage turned into joy. So, with that, let me introduce the most honorable, the most deserving Veronica. Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about being here this morning, and thank you so much for all of the kind words you said. I'm really humbled and honored to be here. And I really, this success and the accomplishments that I achieved, that Councilmember Sadio shared, really would not have been possible without my amazing staff, the partner organization, my Family Source Center colleagues, our funders, and the support of Councilmember Gil Sadio and his staff. You guys have all accomplished, or helped me accomplish that, and so thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm really honored that they could be here with me today. I'm also super honored that today we have so many of the families that we serve. I have to say, they are truly the reason that I come to work every day, they inspire me. You know, we have, one year, we had this one family member that I had seen at a bus stop, and when I saw her, it was in the evening, and she was, I thought she was waiting for the bus with her friend and a baby, and they weren't. They were doing surveys for bus riders on a transportation planning grant that we were working on at the time. And I said to her, Maria, you don't have to be doing surveys so late at night. And she said to me, if we don't ask family members that take the bus at night, how are we going to make a difference in this city? And I think it was from that moment that it really turned my way of thinking around. It really inspired me to become a better leader, and really look at how I am bettering, not, how I am bettering the community that I work in. And so, it saddens me to, to leave them and working with them so closely, but I'm excited about the opportunity to work with the entire city family, with all of you and your districts on the Family Source System, and really improving the academic achievement and the economic mobility of the families, and really trying to create wealth and prosperity. So I want to thank you all, and again, to the staff, Olivia, all of the partners, and all of my families, and many of them, I have to say, so I've been there 17 years, and so Rita and some of these families have been with me that long, and so it's really heartbreaking, you know, it's like, when I saw them this morning, I was, got all teary-eyed, and I'm like, it's really part of my extended family, and I'm so joyful that they are here. Thank you.
Let's give the staff, extended family, a round of applause.
So Veronica, a brief, a sad but brief farewell, and a great big welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have more than 12 members, so why don't we reconsider, I believe it's items 7 and 8, or?
That is correct, sir.
So let's vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
I think we'll start off with some of our multiple comment. So do I have Michael? Michael, you have items 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and general public comment. Michael? Sergeants, if you'd, wait, come up to the...
Is that Michael Stanchamore?
Well, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, it's good to be here, and hello, Councilmembers, and it was good to see the students from LAUSD, and that's what I'm here to talk about. LAUSD has system, the board, the administrators, have systematically and structurally practiced discrimination against...
Okay, okay, Michael, let me, let me, let me stop you for a second. You signed up to speak on item 26 on the agenda.
Okay, well, I...
You, you, you signed up to speak on item 27 on the agenda, and 28, 29, and 30. So you have to speak on those items. Those items don't have anything to do with LAUSD.
All right.
But you also have one minute for general public comment, where you can talk about those. So it, my question is, do you want to speak to 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30?
No.
Or do you want to go straight to your general public comment for one minute where you can talk about what you want to talk about?
Well, I was, I was informed that I could speak for three minutes at some time.
No, you were informed by who?
One of the participants here.
Yeah, well, see, you...
Okay, I didn't understand how the...
So that's why I'm trying to explain.
Yeah.
So if you sign up for an item on the agenda...
Okay, no.
You have to speak to that agenda item.
I understand, I'm not speaking to...
If you want to just give your thoughts, you get one minute for general public comment. So why don't we just let you say whatever you want in this one minute? Go ahead.
All right. Well, I'm saying, I'm here to tell you that LAUSD practices discrimination against men of color. And I was on the elementary level, and LAUSD, the administrators, and the, and the unions did nothing to, to support my civil rights. The teachers lied, I mean, the principal lied, and this is, this city needs men of color to act as positive role models in my district or where I was working. It was reported in The Times on September, or whatever, about how out of 451 schools in LA, we're working below the, no, 451 schools, 51 were in our, were in my area, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, Mr. Herman, cut it out. Let's call up Mr. Walsh. You have cards on item 1, 26, 27, 28, and your one minute at the end for general public comment. Mr. John Walsh, please come forward.
This is regarding legislation to establish state-chartered bank to allow personally licensed to engage in commercial cannabis activity. Fuck cannabis!
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, you have to speak on item 26.
I am speak, oh, 25.
No, no, no. Item 26 is rezos to remove properties from the REAP.
26, 26. This obsession was getting high. Mr. O'Farrell...
Mr. Walsh, please speak to the item.
Number 27 relative to number 26, properties rent escrow, and it, okay, have corrected the REAP violations, and these are violations that should stand. 26, 27, 28. The mayor wants to hold a public hearing. Where is his goddamn ass? It's in South Carolina sucking off racist...
Mr. Walsh, let's stay on an item, please.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about...
Oh, you want to go to general public comment, whatever you want to do?
Okay, I'm going to go to general public comment.
Give him his one minute.
I'm going to go to general public comment. Where is the fucking mayor? He's sucking cock in South Carolina because he wants in South Carolina to get their votes. He wants to be president, el presidente of the United States. Fuck him. Fuck his shit. I'm telling you right now, unless he admits that he is gay and that his lover is Glenn Dake, okay, his lover is Glenn Dake, if that's a lie, say, I want one person to get up here and say, Mr. Walsh, you're full of shit. You're lying about Glenn Dake, he is not his lover. And that will destroy it. That will destroy the rumor that Glenn Dake is his lover. And Sylvia Dake, he got a job, and he also got a job for, with MWD for Glenn Dake. Hey, that's fine. He wants to suck Glenn Dake's cock, go ahead, but not on my dime.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to Ms. McAllister. Ms. McAllister, you have items 1, 27, 29, and general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number 29 about that budget hearing, I will be there, and I went on, online and went to the city's website to find out what the mayor did with 2017, 2018, that money, okay? He had allocated $1,200 million for the homeless, and he said that he promised to spend $90 million in 2017, 2018. You tell me you see $90 million worth of housing out there. You guys are stealing like, I never, I'm from Chicago, I know the game. You guys are out doing Chicago. We want to know where this money is going. This is what the mayor said. He says homelessness is a moral issue.
So, Mr. President, we veered fairly far away from the issue.
I'm talking about the budget.
Veer, veer, Ms. McAllister, veer back, just veer back.
I'm on the budget.
Veer back.
Now, what, what do you all do? Cut me off? Give me my time back.
No, Ms. McAllister, nobody's trying to cut you off. Just go back, go back to the item.
I'm on item number, the budget item number 29. Now you guys took all my time. The mayor has not spent $90 million.
Hold, hold her time, Mr. City Attorney.
So, the item before us is the timing of the budget, and one things will come before Council. It's not specific items like homelessness. So, if the Speaker wants to talk about when the budget hearings will be held, that would be clearly within the agenda item. This really isn't.
Go ahead, Ms. McAllister.
Okay, I lost about a minute on that. Okay, here's another thing. I saw you had some students in here. Let me tell people, I got this from LAUSD's website, how many students we have of illegal aliens? When I say illegal aliens...
What item are you on there? Ms. McAllister, you know the items that you can speak on?
You guys are really, you know...
No, 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 we're, we're, this is the way, these are the rules, and here to them. Give her her one minute for general public comment.
No, no. I know the game, that's all right. You're going to prison anyway. President Trump is on his way, I'm on my public comment. President Trump is visiting California, we want him to visit Skid Row and other parts. As far as the students, there are, as far as LAUSD's website, 713,000 students in LAUSD, and guess how many are illegal aliens, children of illegal aliens? 607,000. You drive by any school, you're going to see nothing but Mexicans, Asians, and other illegals, okay? Here's the deal, we want to know where that $90 million is that the mayor said he spent. We want to know where it is. We want a federal audit of the city, a federal audit. Also, you've got 550 attorneys on, on staff here, and you're hiring thousands outside. We want these attorneys out of here, they're taking billions. I say that we need also to audit City Hall and get these illegal aliens out of City Hall. Some of the legal aliens are sitting in the mayor's office.
Mr. Previn, items 1, 2, 4, 5, 27, 28, 29, and 30, and then your general public comment.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn from Studio City in CD2, and I'm going to make some negative comments, and they are protected by the First Amendment, so please don't interrupt. Item number one today, I'd like to acknowledge CD9, who have administered five nasty liens against constituents, which is the record for today. In second, one of them is 6,000, so he, in addition to getting his current price, in addition to getting five, he also got the highest one at over 6,000. And then item numbers, there's two other ones from CD7, Rodriguez, who's doing the running with her sister, 38, 31. And then right in third place is Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson with $3,815 against one of his constituents, and he also has several, I couldn't quite tabulate it. It, it raises questions because we do have a homeless crisis, so I think that people are anxious about that. And yet, here we are on item 28 with a civil service exemption for a deputy supervisor for the LA Department of Building and Safety who are going around administering these. And item number 27 is a sole source agreement with Cal State University Northridge. These are for the most difficult areas in town to get access to services, and I, I would just ask that among the services that they provide guidance on, please investigate the Smart Boot Program that Mr. Englander was touting earlier today, which has 10,000 smart boots on Angelenos since August. They do 50 to 55 a day, they're doing 81 is the record so far, but I think Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Rue, while scanning their phones up in public safety, think we can do better, think we can go after people who are getting repeatedly cited for sleeping in their cars and stuff like that. We can get them with multiple thousand dollar things, and Englander is very excited, we're going to get a financial report back very soon. So, sir, you ought to be very proud of your team for going after people with this enforcement ethos in the face of a homeless crisis. I'm not pleased, but obviously you must be. And for item number two, I just want to thank Krikorian, who's helping out, a group called Sunshine Realty Investment, they're going to get a little, they're going to put a sidewalk in actually, out in the valley on Witsit. We all got concerned it might be the Harvard Wits, not. It's up by Califa, so we're not quite sure what that is. And do I have the, I'm still in the, the item set, so I would just like to make it clear that the 29, which is the budget item, the CLA, the CAO, and obviously the clerk are going to provide information to the public. Historically, that has been a choppy process at best. Krikorian announces multiple days and then rescinds them all after crowing about all the open time for public comment. We do want actually more than 60 seconds, we want to be able to speak on the individual item, so if you would report that to the clerk, and to the CAO, and to AVAC, that would be great. AVAC's technology of item one for the entire nine days of budget hearings, which is supposed to be more, is, is unfriendly to people who have things to say on point. So, I would say, now are we at general public comment yet?
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. A measure of gratitude obviously is in order for the Disney Corporation, who you don't know yet because it's up in Englander's committee, are providing $1.1 million grant in Park Hopper passes for LAFD. These are our, our first responders who protect us during the fires, but now they're going to be able to jump between theme parks down at Disney. Now, last week, they bumped the prices at Disney to $135. Now, it raises questions, given that we have a $21 million shortfall in their budget. We have, you know, quadruple is code for a lot of overtime in that group, and we want them to be able to work, and, you know, some people say that these guys sleep on double overtime, I don't believe that. I believe that they are being paid at ordinary compensation. But to do that while Jennifer Medina is reporting, as O'Farrell read carefully, Disney is paying barely minimum wage, I think below minimum wage or something like, or minimum wage isn't yet at 50. I know we all fight for minimum wage, but these are homeless Disney employees parking on the PCH to sleep at night and getting knocked on the door and being given a smart boot by Englander. Let's fix that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Okay, let's have Mr. Herman, items one. Two, three, four, five, six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Yes, Mr. Herman.
So, how does the relative holding of a public hearing not reflect the mayor's budget? Well, John Walsh was right. Who the fuck is the mayor running this city? And why can't we have a budget that reflects the negative declaration on housing? That's a budget. That's a part of the budget. See, Mr. City Attorney, when you don't pretend to act on the actions of the mayor's proposed budget...
Mr. Herman, the, the item is about the timing of the budget. Please direct your comments to that.
I'm addressing it based on the motion, nigga. Unstrucking the fucking city clerk and the fucking assistants of the city fucking administrative officer and the fucking chief legislative analyst to stay on the fucking budget to provide fucking information for public fucking interest to the fucking public on the fucking mayor's proposed budget in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, fucked up budget and fucked up publication required public notices, dumb nigger. Then I'm going to go on to the liens, because on item L under seven oh six West Sixtieth Street, that goddamn fucking Price, Mr. Price, knock, knock, did you sign a registered later and notification to the applicant at that residence? Did you notify by registered mail and certified mail? No, you did not. So, you put this goddamn lien against the plaintiff, who's here to argue that I'm here to settle the lien, waive all the two hundred and fifty percent interest, and let the motherfuckers pay the penalty. Stop putting people in jeopardy of homelessness. HHH is a bitch when it comes to a lien, and that's where the lien will direct people back into the goddamn street, Mr. City Attorney. Does that reflect the budget, the lien? Yes, it does, because the general fund is reflection of a lien. You circulate that fucked up money into the piggy bank, recirculate that fucked up money to your proposals and your commissions on development, and what happens? Sadio says, "I never took the money." Now, my general fucking public comment.
Start this one a minute, please.
It's not only the chair, it's not only Sadio and the dibble dwarf and the other two other assholes of this administrative council shoe. It is, why are you taking development money? Corruption up the ass. Corruption in Los Angeles is so deep up my ass, I could pull the shit out with one thumb and smear it in your faces, the way I am right now. Criticizing you fucked up politicians who don't provide housing, and you want the World Cup? Why should we have a World Cup when we're the third fucked up city in line to no money? No money for the World Cup. You know why? Because our homeless people defecating and urinating throughout the city because we can't provide restrooms. And where is the committee of the World Cup going to go piss? I'll show you. I'll piss on you, Weezer First, for fucking up Fiesta Broadway and fucking up a...
You're done. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next speaker is Mr. Spindler. Wayne Spindler. You signed up for items, um, one A, one B, one D, one E, one F, one G, one H, one I, one J, one K, one L, one M, one N, one O, one P, one S, one T, number two, item number three, four, five, six, item number twenty-six A, twenty-six B, twenty-six C, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, and general public comment. Go ahead.
I thought she was illiterate. You told me that. Okay, so, yes, we start with the CD eight. Ran by, I don't know why, my goat pointed out the other day, why do we have a skinhead running CD eight? But he's giving out liens, the skinhead in CD eight, too much money, and somebody's here to bitch, bitch, bitch about these liens. And as John Walsh said, that's what we care about, liens. Now, we don't want these fucking liens. Look at CD nine. CD nine doesn't even have a council member. He lives in the eighth district, yet he's giving out liens in a district he doesn't live in. This is outrageous. Then I asked the great Gil Sadio to waive one I on South Hoover Street, my favorite street, sixteen twenty-three South Hoover, waive the lien for twelve eighty-eight. We're doing a good job over there. We're just putting a CVS in there. It's a great stop. Now, we get to CD two, and you know what that means? No, it's not. No, it's not that. What is it? Go ahead, Mr. Goat. Yes, CD two involves that rotten Armenian over there, Cracorian, the filthball Armenian on Witsit Avenue, for sidewalk fucking purposes. First of all, we don't need sidewalks on Witsit Avenue. It's a right-of-way for white people. If you have people that ride bicycles, fuck them. Stay off of Witsit Avenue. Oh, look, hi, Mr. Skinhead. Oh, boy, look at that. A real skinhead, everybody.
Can you get down to the, to the item you signed up for, Mr. Spindler?
Stay on the topic. I'm going to put you in the back. Okay. So, now, as we said, and we agree with the skinhead Marquisi, now on number two. Thank you for that. Yes, we don't want to vacate shit. And then number eleven, that fucking Bonner in number eleven, doing the same thing. Fuck you. And on number five again, fuck you. Number six, what, what the hell's number six? Same thing. Fuck you, and number six. Now, we get to the twenty-sixth amendment of the Constitution. Does Norrie know what the twenty-sixth amendment is? No, she's illiterate. That's right. Yes, that's right. But twenty-six on today's agenda involves, we're running out of time, asshole. Get me the thing. REAP. Congratulations for REAP. When you're doing a good job, the goat says so.
Go ahead and start on your general public comment.
So, you guys got a problem. You got, well, you know, the first problem is, you, you know, you people belong in prison, but the second problem is, now you done it. You turned Janice Han into the FBI. I told you not to do that, but you did. Now, you're going to get Janice Han indicted. Now, Janice Han's not one of these people like the normal white people. Janice Han is one of the major gangsters on the West Coast, and what she's going to do is there are going to be people maybe missing or displaced. Janice Han's the real thing, but that fucking Richard Lung, thanks to Buscayeno, ratted himself out to the FBI. Oh, don't indict me. I'm a father. I'm a former cop. Fuck you, Buscayeno. I support Janice Han, and fuck you.
Um, next speaker. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, Mr. Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on items, um, twenty-six through twenty-nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, those items pass. Let's go ahead and take up item, speakers for item number one. Cristobal Lupien, are you here?
Good morning, City Council.
Good, good morning. You are, you filled out a card for items one L.
That would be item CD nine?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, I'm actually Cristobal Lupien. I'm here in response to the action the, uh, City Council has considered to put a lien on my property. I have, um, prior to this council meeting, I have submitted my, um, my responsive, um...
Can you hold on for just a minute? Hold his time for just a second.
So, Madam President, we've got Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman doing jumping jacks out there, distracting us.
Okay, Mr. Sergeants, can you please escort Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman out of council chambers, please? You're done. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, sir. We need to escort these two gentlemen that continue. Mr. Herman, continue to disrupt the meeting.
And Mr. Herman shouting.
You're done, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Pick up your stuff and go.
Every day, they're warned about this type of activity. They know perfectly well that they are intentionally distracting our, from us conducting our business. And he's shouting on the way out, obscenities on the way out. And, and Mr. Herman is trying to say he was just sitting there quietly, which I know is not the case because I was looking at him, sitting in the audience, obviously trying to distract us, and not focusing on the speaker who came here to deal with an important issue. And he's shouting on the way out. And as is Mr. Spindler, they're both walking backwards, taking as long as they possibly can to leave the, of the chambers to keep us from doing our business.
Mr. Lupien, I apologize. We're going to give you back your time. Hold on for just a second. Let's start the clock on Mr. Lupien. Mr. Spindler continues to disrupt the meeting. Give him back the minute. Let's start over again. I apologize. Good morning. Go ahead.
Yes, as I've indicated earlier, I, prior to this, um, meeting, um, I'd actually submitted my, uh, declaration regarding the, the issue at hand, and, um, I wanted to make sure that my voice was heard in regards to this issue. I wanted to, um, present my, um, my objection to what is expected. Uh, that means, uh, putting a lien on my property. Uh, I'm sure the council had the opportunity to review my, um, my declaration of the events that led to, uh, the current hearing. Um, and I just like the council to understand and give me the opportunity to, um, have my case evaluated and all, in all fairness, in all fairness. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lupien. I'm going to go ahead and direct you to my right. There is a staff member from Council District Nine that can help you. Somebody, is there a representative from Council District Nine that can help this gentleman?
This gentleman, bro.
Go ahead, and we're going to hold this on the desk until we can get things squared away. Thank you. Let's go ahead and send item twenty-eighth forthwith. Next speaker is Edgar Moore. Edgar Moore.
Good morning. We have a, a lien violation. However, the, uh, information was sent to, uh, the wrong address. And, um, they're expecting us to, um, pay for something that we weren't notified of back in two thousand and sixteen. They sent two more letters, uh, this year, uh, one on the thirteenth and one on the twenty-third, um, to two different addresses again.
Are you, um, um, we're looking for the representative for this, um, district?
District.
Um, you see this young woman over here? Raise your hand. Okay. Um, you can go ahead and step off to the side, and then she can go ahead and meet with you. We're going to go ahead and keep this item on the desk until we can get that taken care of. Thank you. I've just been notified that item number one A is going to be continued for thirty days. That's until April tenth.
And, Madam President, there has been a request from the department to also continue for thirty days to April tenth, items one B, one F, one G, one I, and one S.
That will be the order without objection. The next speaker is Leslie Moore. Leslie Moore. She might have been, are you Leslie Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm here to speak about my situation with the, uh, my property in North Hills at one six four three three Gladhill Street in North Hills, California. Uh, I'm facing a, uh, what I believe was an unfair lien from the LEDBS regarding debris removed from my property on, uh, September twenty-first and twenty-third of two thousand and seventeen. The situation is that my property is currently under criminal investigation for real estate fraud, identity theft, and hate crimes committed against me, uh, by Detective Helen Lim at the, uh, Parker Center downtown, the Real Estate Fraud Unit, and the, uh, the criminal parties that are suspect in these matters, uh, GRK Property LLC and Artisan Financial, in which the members are, um, uh, James Rojas, uh, Jessica Quinio, David Stern, Manny Hernandez, and Carlos Hernandez, who are criminals who have, are under investigation, have been arrested for these crimes, uh, broke into my home and destroyed the inside...
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Your time is up. Thank you. Go ahead and take a seat. Thank you. Next speaker is Oscar Gomez on item one B. Oscar Gomez is not here, but I was notified, um, this item's going to be continued for thirty days, correct, Mr. City Attorney? That would be April tenth.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item number one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take up items, um, items two through six. Let's open the vo, the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Madam President, for procedural matters, um, for items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, could we, uh, pull those up and vote on those matters now, please?
Sir, let's go ahead and, um, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And again, there's been a request to send twenty-eight forthwith.
Correct. Mr. Bonner, are you ready for item twenty-one?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Um, just a, a quick, uh, item here. Um, I think this is sort of implied by the, um, the, the instruction, but I checked with CD ten, and they're okay with a friendly amendment that just asks that the, um, city attorney be instructed when doing the ordinance to require, uh, that, um, uh, the provisions of neighborhood-specific plans apply to the advertising rules. The city attorney has, has asked me to repeat that the instruction would be to ask the city attorney to, uh, make clear that the ordinance makes it clear that, uh, the new advertising regulations, uh, still comply with the neighborhood-specific plan rules and other advertising rules that already exist.
And, Madam President, that would need a second.
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you.
And public comment was satisfied on this item, so let's go ahead and take up that vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Englander, are you ready for item fourteen, sir?
Ah, yes, I am, Madam President. I've just got a couple of technical changes and corrections on this item, so, uh, the report that came back from the committee said that liens should go to Public Works. That was an error. Um, liens should actually go to Budget and Finance Committee, um, in addition, uh, to send easements and street vacations to the Public Safety Committee. And then one last one is the installation of stars to the Walk of Fame to arts and parks.
Okay, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go ahead and, uh, vote on this item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. City Clerk, let's go ahead and, uh, adjourn our, uh, regular session and go into our public special meeting.
Very good, Madam President. Bloomingfield, Bonnabu, Sadio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carrasco, Coria, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, West, and fourteen members present, Madam President. That brings us to item thirty-one. It is, uh, an item that public hearing has been held in committee.
Members, anyone want to speak on this item? Seeing no members, we've satisfied public comment, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Preven, you can sit down. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and go back to our regular...
Very good, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up general public comment cards. Jacqueline Richardson, are you here? Come on down, ma'am. After Ms. Richardson, it's Michelle Bisnov and Samir Santi. Good morning, Ms. Richardson.
There is a problem. Uh, Mexican people are nice. Some are not so nice. Black people are getting better attitudes. The problem is, when, uh, we get together on some of these jobs, some of the black men get after the Mexican women and some of the Mexican women get after the black men, and it causes hurt feelings. Consequently, some of the black men are not getting jobs because of that. About twenty years ago, some of the black men in this area and in the Crenshaw, uh, area were real mean to the Mexican people, really, really mean and rough with them. Consequently, after that, they were not getting jobs. Uh, black people are getting better attitudes now, so hopefully that'll improve. Some of the black churches, the big-time black churches, about ten years ago were not hiring black people. They had a congregation full of black people, but they were not hiring them for, uh, truck driving jobs, lawn pickup jobs. They probably have a long list of reasons why they weren't hiring black people in some of those positions. Movie stars used to hire a lot of black people too, but they're not har... they weren't hiring them about ten years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next speaker is Michelle Bisnov. Are you here? Good morning, and then followed by Samir Santi. Are you, Mr. Santi? And followed by Antonio Mendoza. Is Antonio Mendoza here? Good morning, Ms. Bisnov.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, I'm here on behalf of the Brentwood Community Council. My name is Michelle Bisnov. I'm the Vice Chair. We're here today regarding, um, agenda items number twenty-one and twenty-three. Specific to twenty-one, we would ask the City Attorney to specify in the ordi... in the ordinance the exact method of enforcement and penalty for signage regarding cannabis establishments. And in number... Agenda number twenty-three, we'd like to specify that the, uh, West Los Angeles Veterans Administration be included in specific use exclusions or sensitive use exclusions because of the renovations going on there that will make that a primarily, um, a use case for, uh, treatment and facilities for veterans in the future. That's it.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Santi, followed by Antonio Mendoza, followed by Charles Dew. Is Mr. Dew here? Come on. You can stand behind Mr. Mendoza. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, good morning, my name is Samir Santi. I live in Koreatown in CD thirteen. I'm a member of the LA for Fair B&amp;B Coalition, interested in protecting affordable housing amidst the worst housing crisis the city of Los Angeles has ever seen. Uh, the policy that we propose to regulate short-term rentals, uh, was introduced on June second, two thousand and fifteen. Since then, we've lost four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four units. Every day, we lose four point nine, or almost five, units, and every month, we lose one hundred and forty-seven units. Um, I can't tell you how many immigrant working-class families I've seen priced out of my neighborhood, and I know this is only gonna continue until we address the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, Mr. Mendoza, followed by Charles Dew, followed by Maria Kamel. Is Ms. Kamel here? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, um, good morning, uh, Ms. Martinez, I'm members of City Council. My name is Antonio Mendoza. I live in seven-twenty-five South Spring Street, and I'm a member of the Fair B&amp;B Coalition, interested in protecting affordable housing during the worst crisis, um, housing crisis of our city. You know, since the regulation has been introduced for short-term rentals, in June two, two thousand and fifteen, four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four units have been taken out of the market. I li... you know, I'm an artist, and I live in downtown. All my artist friends can't afford living down there. You know, it's... rents are skyrocketing, and, yeah, every day, we lose nearly five units to short-term rentals. Every month, we lose nearly a hundred and fifty units to short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Charles Dew, followed by Maria Kamel and Robert Manning. Is Robert Manning here? Mr. Manning? Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Charles Dew. I live in Chinatown. I'm a member of the LA for Fair B&amp;B Coalition, interested in protecting affordable housing amidst the worst housing crisis the city of LA has ever seen. The policy to regulate short-term rentals was introduced on June second, two thousand and fifteen. Since then, we've lost four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four units. Every day, we lose four point nine units. Every month, we lose one hundred and forty-seven units. Uh, I'm a young professional, recently moved to LA. I love living here, I love working here, but the truth is, uh, with the housing costs rising every year, um, with how expensive it is to live here, I... I don't see a future here. I will have to leave LA, uh, in the near future if I wanna, you know, buy a house or just have security in the place I live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Maria Kamel, followed by Robert Manning. Sir, are you Robert Manning? Hold on for just a second, I just wanna make sure, Mr. M... are you... are you Robert Manning, sir? Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Maria Teresa Kamel. I'm a Catholic worker and a part of the Skid Row Now and Twenty-Forty Coalition. Our coalition was created to strengthen the Skid Row community and assure that it's represented in the community planning. Our coalition consists of activists and residents of Skid Row, and we know what our community needs. We know that we have to end displacement of our residents. We know we need housing for our extremely low-income residents, and that we need political representation. We also know that the most basic needs of our community are not being met despite the city's many promises and policies. We see our friends struggle to live on the streets, we see them suffer, and we see them die. Our coalition member and fellow Catholic worker Caleb Havens is still chained to the fence of the former Salvation Army building on Fifth and Gladys. He is on a Lenten hunger strike and has undergone this to bring attention to what the LA Times has deemed a national disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manning? Before you go, sir, I'm gonna call three more speakers. Micah Wolchlerger, followed by Daria Ovid... Ovaid? Daria Ovaid? Come on up. Nora Sanchez? Nora Sanchez? Go ahead, Mr. Manning.
Uh, yes, my name is Robert Manning. I'm only here just to, uh, on, uh, Mister... from the state of California. Basically, Congresswoman Maxine Waters, she got with my late grandmother, um, during the freeway expansion of the one-ten, and Travis Gibbs was the attorney. Long story short, I'm putting in, uh, paperwork based on what they told me. They said the city never accepted their deal back in nineteen ninety-two, so I'm just waiting on Mr. City Attorney... is it Foer, or am I saying that correct? Foer? City Attorney Foer?
It's Fewer.
Few, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just waiting on his response, uh, why they didn't accept, um, the nineteen ninety-two... it created domino effect, basically. So, that's all. I'm just trying to get information on that, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next speaker? Are you Micah?
Yes.
Okay, followed by Daria. Is Nora Sanchez in the room? Nora Sanchez is not here. The last speaker is Leah Renee Mesmek. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Micah Wolchlerger. I'm also a Catholic worker. I was here two weeks ago to tell you about the start of Caleb Havens' hunger strike and Skid Row to protest the conditions and draw attention to the housing crisis that we are undergoing right now. Last night, another homeless activist, um, Addie... let me get this right. Addie Catherine Price, she died of hypothermia. This is just to underline that we are, in fact, in a crisis, and when we get a response from the city, it's, "We're working on it." We ask for housing, we get homeless shelters. We ask for jobs, it's outsourced to private companies. You know, this is not working. You are not working on this. This is a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Daria? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Daria Ovade. Uh, I live on the south side of Echo Park in CD one, uh, Mr. Sadio, and, uh, I'm also a member of the Fair... LA for Fair B&amp;B Coalition, um, interested in protecting affordable housing, um, by creating sensible regulation on short-term rentals. So, policy to regulate the short-term rental industry was introduced on June second, two thousand and fifteen, and since then, our city has lost four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four units, um, for, um, for residents of LA to the short-term housing industry. Every day, we lose four point nine units. Every month, we lose one hundred and forty-seven units of housing for renters that's going to tourists. Um, I'm concerned about this because I see it in my neighborhood. I... obviously, the south side of Echo Park is rapidly gentrifying, and, um, I know that more and more of my neighbors are facing, um, the possibility of being evicted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leah, are you ready?
Hi, and this is my, um, are you grouped right? Three of them?
No, you only signed up for general public comment.
No, actually, I signed up for...
No, you did not. Leah, you just signed up for general public comment.
And eighteen dash zero six zero zero.
Those items have been voted on.
Pardon?
Those items have all been voted on, so you have your one minute of general public comment.
Okay. So, um, dear Council members and fellow citizens, uh, please submit this to eighteen dash zero zero six... eighteen dash zero six zero zero, which is Garcetti's two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget for the city of Los Angeles. Public officials and city employees have a pattern of violating the law. You cannot fix anything until you address the pattern of fraud, waste, and abuse, and foreseeable harms and damages, which must be included in the city of Los Angeles budget for the actual liabilities to the city of LA stakeholders and investors. It's pretty pathetic when you laugh, and I'm letting you know that you're corruptly altering public records and you have harm.
Thank you, Leah. Your minute is up, thank you. There has been... there has been a request to reconsider item one L, Mr. City Attorney, so let's go ahead and open it up for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that item is before us, and there's also a request to continue it for thirty days, which is April tenth. Okay, so that will be the order. Okay, um, Sergeants, can we please prepare the room for closed session on item number Members, we're gonna go into closed session for item number thirty.
The individual was attacked, uh, simply for his orientation, and, uh, we're just not gonna tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, nine oh nine, nine eight seven, five zero zero five.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 p.m. until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't... They're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents. The guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zana Gabor tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Say better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not gonna tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the We tip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. We tip hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it or lose it.
However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't... They're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents. The guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Is everyone back in? The sergeants, did you open the door completely wide open? Great. Mr. City Attorney? Go ahead. Did you have an announcement, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, there was no final action in item number... The closed section item number 30. It's been...